Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Ipswich School Committee meeting of December 2nd to order at 7:01. This meeting is also broadcast on YouTube. I'm just turning my phone off. Sorry, folks. Thank you for coming, everyone. Caroline Jensen, our student representative, would you please read the district mission statement?
Yeah. Ipswich Public Schools aspires to empower all students to be global citizens who are effective communicators, analytical problem solvers, and savvy consumers of information. We propose to do this through an emphasis on communication, critical thinking, creativity, self-management, perseverance, and collaboration. Students will be active partners in authentic learning, offering voice and choice in demonstrating competency.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Announcements. A little late getting this stuff together, sorry. The next school committee meeting will be held on Thursday, December 16th at 7:00 PM in the middle school, high school ensemble room. The following subcommittees and working groups will be meeting. Policy Subcommittee, Tuesday, December 7th at 5:30 PM. Race and Equity Working Group, Tuesday, December 7th at 7:30 PM. Athletic Subcommittee, Thursday, December 9th at 5:30 PM. Negotiation Subcommittee, Tuesday, December 14th at 3:45 PM.
Chubb, I think Budget's meeting at 6:00 on...
On the 16th.
The 16th.
The Budget is meeting at 6:00 PM on the 16th of December.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Blake, special acknowledgements?
Yes, just to this evening, I want to congratulate the girls volleyball team on their state championship.
It was awesome!
We hope to bring them either on the 16th or the first meeting in January to congratulate them along with all of our winter athletes. And then our girls field hockey team is actually the runner-up in the state championship tournament. They lost one nothing to the local team. Both teams, all of our winter sports actually had a pretty good run this year.
On follow-up, in some communities, they put a sign on the entry to the town saying, "Home of the 2021 State Champion Girls Volleyball Team." I don't know if we could talk to the DPW about something, some signage like that. I think they might have done it for one of the prior state championships for lacrosse or something like that. So it might be nice to recognize the kids in that way.
Fabulous. Congratulations to them.
And if you saw the team, they were a passionate team. They were, they played with a lot of grit and intensity and ended up really coming together as a team as the season went on and getting better and better and better. They lost, I think, their fifth or sixth game at the beginning of the season, and then they swept the season after that. So it really was a dominant performance. They were 22-1 overall. They beat some incredible teams, a lot of Division 1 teams, all the neighboring towns. We beat the Beverlys and the Danverses and Bishop Fenwick and all the communities around here. So we really played high-level teams across the season and beat them all. So it was really a great, great effort.
Fantastic. Okay. Citizens comments?
Thank you. Mitch McDonald, Kimball Avenue. I have a few questions that hopefully are relevant to your discussion later. First question is, what educational basis or educational criteria you're going to use for choosing the school site? I'd like to point out that of your current school sites, when I was listening to the school education plans, I think it was your last meeting, you chose this one. The only principal who mentioned that they incorporate the use of the location of the school into their current development plan was going on school. They have a, they have lots of Willadale State Forest. It's a beautiful location. We know the value of environmental education. We have an award-winning teacher who has utilized that resource. And there are known, in addition to those educational benefits, there are known health and well-being benefits for adults and children. In particular, ADHD children being outside and in the environment can, it helps with their attention, things like that. And there are studies that show that. It's not just me saying that, and I can forward those to you at some point if it's something. But I think that's an important factor, and I hope that you will look at that when you're considering a school site. The other question I have is, I looked at the June 7th School Facilities Working Group minutes, and in there it seemed like, unless I misunderstand the process, that you had a plan for bringing forward to the fall town meeting your proposal and your decision tree, and then you were going to hold listening sessions before you voted. And I looked after that, and I couldn't find any minutes reflecting that that plan had changed before the town meeting. So I don't know if I'm looking in the right spots. Sometimes it's hard to find minutes. If someone could provide me that information, that would be helpful. I mean, I'd like to see their reasons for the change. Also, would like to know if there are studies or other information that you're relying on now for your current plan to go to the Select Board and seek release of Violet Park? And if you vote that way tonight, if you're going to bring those studies and that information with you, presented to the Select Board with your vote tonight? Also, I'm concerned about, and I wrote this to you earlier, I'm concerned about the idea of listening sessions after you've made important decisions. And there have been characterizations of majority votes against taking Violet Park and people like me who speak as vocal minorities. And so I don't have a lot of confidence that your listening sessions are actually going to listen to what I feel or say or what others like-minded like me, like the majority of folks who voted against using Violet Park. And so I would like you to think of ways that you can provide confidence to the town if you're going to hold listening sessions, that it's actually going to be a listening session and not just airing just some feel-out idea of the rest of the streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for citizen comments? Okay. Caroline?
The high school representative report?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So a lot of exciting things have been happening in the recent weeks at the high school. So like Dr. Blake mentioned, with the sports teams, volleyball claimed their first state title in the past two weeks. And then field hockey also made it to their state final championship game, but unfortunately lost. The boys cross-country team competed in the Division III All-State Meet, and the team placed 13th overall. Amelia Stacy also competed as an individual for the girls cross-country team at the state meet and won the 32nd place overall. For clubs and fundraisers, the Green Team and Environmental Club worked together this afternoon to clean up the school grounds to improve the health of our campus. It was a good turnout, and the Green Team is working on adding more activities and/or landscape to the well-loved garden in front of the high school. The National Honor Society had a successful in-person induction ceremony for the students who were accepted. It was held in the pack with a full audience of parents for the first time in a while. The Interact Club is planning their annual Jingle Bell Walk at Town Hall. And our math teacher, Mr. Shippen, is rebooting the high school's ski and snowboard club. They're planning on taking trips to Sunday River, Gunstock, and possibly doing a weekend trip. Also, students of the high school have been invited to attend the Student Government Day, which will be held in April as a remote event. Students get to participate in a mock government in order to better understand how our government works. And lastly, this sustainability class in the Environmental Club will be holding a coat drive for refugees that are coming to the North Shore. Also, in terms of theater groups, the Ipswich High School music program is set to have their first winter concert, December 16th in the pack, with its normal-sized audience. And that hasn't happened since the beginning of the pandemic, so that's all I have.
December 16th?
Yeah.
When's the Jingle Bell Walk?
I know. Stand by.
I don't have the date for that, but I'll look for that.
Inquiring minds, inquiring two-year-olds want to know.
Yeah, I was just thinking. Here, I'll find it.
Is that this?
Is that Emily? I think I heard the 18th.
All right.
It's the Saturday, yeah, Saturday, the 18th. My daughter is in fact running that.
Ah, what time?
I can get it right now.
When is Santa coming?
So your cleanup today, I heard, had a lot of people.
Yes, there were, a lot. Yeah, it was a lot of people. That's awesome.
I also heard it was more the Green Teamers. It was lots of student athletes.
Yeah, it was a big...
Very well attended.
Diverse group.
Yeah.
And we cleaned up all around the high school. It wasn't just the high school parking lot. So it was kind of over on this side and near the cafeteria. So it's, the campus is looking more picked up.
Fabulous. Thank you for that. Thank you.
In terms of trash.
Thank you. You know, I think, I think what you're, hopefully this virus doesn't, doesn't make us go sideways, but you're just continuing to bring in more normalcy to our students' lives.
Oh, thank you.
So with every report, so it's really encouraging. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for Caroline? Okay, thank you. Today, we have Karen Tyler, the Director of Veteran Services, here, as well as Rich. I'm sorry, you'll introduce yourself again in a minute. I'm sorry. To speak on the Global War on Terror Speaker Series presentation. Thank you for coming, Karen.
Oh, thank you.
Is someone not wearing a mask?
No. They are now.
No, they're not. Excuse me, sir. You have to wear a mask to be in the building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. No problem. We can get you one if you, if you need one. Thank you.
Passing now.
Thank you.
Okay, forget it. Okay, forget it. No problem. Oh, we're, we're going now.
Lori gets one too, right? Lori gets one. Keep going, keep going.
Okay, forget it, Lori.
We got one more? That's it.
All right.
One more.
One more.
That's all right. No, not a problem. We'll share. We got it.
All right.
I'm sitting on top of her, so. It gets closer and closer. Here's another maskless person.
All right, well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and introduce ourselves and to let you know what we're doing, our initiative for here at Ipswich. I'm Karen Tyler. I'm the Veteran Service Officer for the town. So you're part of Eastern Essex District, and I serve the resident veterans of Ipswich. And this is Rich Barbado. He is an Ipswich resident and Iraq combat veteran. So he'll tell you more about what we're doing.
Awesome. Thanks, Karen. Folks, thanks very much for your time tonight. I have to tell you that I do work with the United States Department of Veterans Affairs in Washington, live here in Ipswich. I am a federal employee. I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here as an Iraq combat veteran. So I grew up in Ipswich, was baptized at St. Joe's before it was Our Lady of Hope. I remember the World War downtown. I remember being down Mitchell Road with my dad, Jim Brady, and back when there was hardly anything down Mitchell Road. So that's who I am as far as that's just as concerned. As Karen mentioned, I served as a captain. I wanted to captain in Iraq, fought in a lot of battles that folks in this room probably never heard of, except for Fallujah in Baghdad. Probably heard of the Battle of Fallujah. I was there, bombed it. Came back home, went to work for Ipsor Shellfish. And because of the Vietnam veterans in the community here, many of you, Jim Dor, Dan Gwann, Eddie Lemieux, Mike Bernard, that's why I'm standing here and speaking to you today, is because those guys safety met me and encouraged me to, you know, set some goals, and one of those was to work for, work with and on behalf of federal veterans. So I started out as a community veteran service officer in Gloucester. I worked my way up to the VA. Went back to school, got a master's in social work. And so what we're trying to do here, if I don't take up the Army, veteran half of the social work there at, is kind of community practice 101. I should also mention that both my parents are public school teachers in Lynn. My dad taught in Lynn Tech for a pretty few years. So the way that I'm approaching this is not trying to recruit anybody into the military, certainly not trying to sell anybody anything. What we're trying to do is educate the public. I've got an effort that we've got going on right now, Cassidy 2069, an act naming the Global War on Terror Memorial Bridge, the High Street Bridge out here, the railroad bridge over there. Senator Tarr and Rep. Hill introduced it, former Rep. Hill, did someone correct me on that? I was saying former Rep. Hill. Introduced it, and now it's been stuck in the Senate Rules Committee. Senate Rules Committee, not another state one. It's stuck with the Senate Rules Committee. We'll wait for them to move it forward, and then we're going to have a dedication here. Because there was some pushback initially, we said, well, let's shape a public education series around this. Hosted it here at the school. We were hoping that the first event that we held in November would have some student turnout. We had one student from the entire school. The speaker that we had here was a buddy of mine, Ryan Pitts, who received a medal of honor for holding a vehicle patrol base, specifically an observation point against him by himself against 300 Taliban. Somehow, he survived, defended off the attack. We lost nine air troopers in the span of about 45 minutes. Ryan and I served with, he saved my buddy, Tim Rumley. Tim ended up losing his life, but Ryan plugged him in and saved his life. So again, what are we trying to do? We're not trying to recruit people. We're trying to essentially cultivate civic responsibility by using some of the granular elements that are imparted to us in the uniform service or the Department of Defense, loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage. Quite obviously, those qualities are not confined to the military, but I can impart many, many examples where a lot of the stuff that I learned in the military has served me very well since then, especially as an advocate in our academy. So we're hoping that you'll help us spread the word about this event. In January, John Castles, who's my battalion commander, is also handpicked to command 3rd Ranger Battalion. He will be coming up here. Folks, this is the first time that a decorated Virginian has visited Ipswich since Washington came here in 1789. So it's kind of a good deal. He's well-known in the Airborne Special Operations Committee. If you were to go to Fort Bragg and mention the name John Castles, people will know exactly what we were talking about. There's a reason for that. The second thing that I'd like to put to the committee, we have met with the principal multiple times, received overwhelming support, recognizing the fact that he can't nighthand people and say, "Hey, teachers, put this out to your students," or I forget how he phrased it exactly. But we would like to put out an essay contest for students. I've got it, it's on the second page. I don't know if you can access it from the seat. It's shaped around the Freedom Foundation of Valley Forge. I went to military school outside of Valley Forge in Pennsylvania, and this was an annual thing that we did. I thought it would be a kind of a good opportunity for students to engage in this. We can definitely have some type of monetary thing in there, but we thought that we could recognize and award something to the top three students at Peter Colonel Castles or have Ryan come back and present it either in January or at our last Speaker Series, which is going to be veteran services. And basically, those individuals who will be speaking will kind of equip the community with resources because the two-part effort with the bridge memorializing sacrifice of the 7,000 folks that were killed in action between Iraq and Afghanistan and Syria. 200 were from the Commonwealth. Some of them, some of those folks were from the surrounding areas. Derek Hines, who was a lieutenant who was in the third Airborne, Ryan actually served with from a different company. He was from Cooperport. He was killed. There's a bridge named after him inside the annual road race that they have. But more also that the Gold Star families that reside in this area, two of those mothers are going to be speaking at the next event, Mary Long Calhoun and Christina Yu, who both lost their sons in Iraq and Afghanistan. So memorializing sacrifice, that's 50% of the effort. The other 50% is acknowledging service. You notice that I didn't say thank you for the service? No, no veterans, myself most especially, don't want to be thanked for my service. I know what I did, and I'm proud to have done it. Acknowledging service. There's a correlation between, and I firmly believe this, the veteran suicide rate in this vicinity and the fact that every community around here in this immediate area is devoid of anything, just acknowledging the fact that young men and women from these communities went forward with the uniform in a non-compulsory military armed force of combatants. Which means that nobody's being drafted. Everybody's stepping forward. Post-9/11 folks, everybody knew where they were going. Okay? Since I came home in 2004, 31 of my friends have died by suicide. And it got to the point where I got tired of going on funerals. And that's why I went to social work. Having something as simple as a sign on the side of the road, and I know that it was met with folks that said the so-called War on Terror. I don't know how folks could find it in their hearts to actually summarize our response to the September 11th attacks at that point. I never thought that I would hear anything from my hometown, someone encapsulate our effort with an obtuse remark like that. But it happened. So again, asking you for your help and getting the word out there, at least putting it on the radar to student body and some faculty here. However, it's got to be rolled out. I don't know if you folks do. And if it's a no-go, you know, at least we tried, and that's why I came here. Depending on any questions, I know I probably went over time, but that's all I can do.
Oh, you've got plenty of time. Take, we'll take all the time. Thank you very much. Is this something that we can advertise, we can advertise in our history, social study classes?
Yep.
I mean, my daughter's in AP US History. That would be a phenomenal place to have, have this come. And do you have any other ideas?
Yep, I do. I do. So just a few. First of all, yes, we can certainly advertise this on our, on our, you know, social media and encourage folks to attend it. The essay piece, I can certainly share that with you. Did you say you already spoke with the principal here at the high school?
We had, I think we sort of...
About this or?
We didn't put any kind of action planning.
Okay, okay.
If there was a teacher that was interested in it, we could run up the live poll.
Yep. I can, I can take care of that for you.
Yes, sir.
Encourage the AP teachers here at the high school and even some of the English teachers to take a look at this and encourage students to participate. And then the third piece, is there anything that we can do? Oh, I see it down here at the bottom. I hadn't read all the way through. Encouraging students to attend the next Speaker Series event, encourage students to take part in the essay contest. But is there anything more specific that we can do to support SD 2069?
Contact the state rep. Well, you can always contact the state rep. I know that there's just been a transition. We just got a new one. So we can reach out to her, so that way she can continue the effort that Rep. Hill started. And also Senator Tarr, you know, is involved. He, you know, when we presented it to him and brought the idea, you know, he was full support, you know, without a doubt, you know, wrote it up, presented it to both the Senate and the House. Both of them, you know, agreed on the effort, and then it had to go through that process. And so it's gone through, the first step was, after they approved it, they sent it over to the Transportation Committee, where Rich and I gave oral testimony. Select woman Linda Allison also attended that, and she gave testimony in support of it. She's a huge advocate. She's on my board of directors. She's Ipswich's representative for the district for veteran services. And so that was just, I mean, it was fantastic to have her support. And so we'd like to spread that throughout the rest of the town and to do it from all levels, from, you know, students to, you know, grandparents and stuff. So more people that can get involved and feel engaged and part of it. When they see that sign, they'll know why it's there. They'll feel like, you know, "Oh, I was there in the beginning, you know? I went to the Speaker Series and I saw the lead up to why it's here." And I just, you know, we think that's just hugely important because it takes ownership.
I mean, it simply also, I mean, just to submit to you further. Two months ago, I was in Gettysburg. I was standing at the Basilica Hill. I was standing on a spot where two Ipswich, two of the soldiers were shot and killed. The difference is happening now, I mean, quite obviously battlefield survivability, et cetera, and just the numbers. .4, .45% of the bodies wasted to put the uniforms on. It's the lowest in our country's history. Quite obviously, you know, that granite obelisk on the top of Town Hill, the reason why that thing's there is, you know, like 600 guys put uniforms on, they left Ipswich, and like 100 came back. The rest of them are buried down south. The irony is that the Southerners, you know, they do right by our death down there. They tend to the graves and do a bad luminary. They put candles by all the graves. Where our, where our folks, the Ipswich men who played arrests is in Fredericksburg, where JAM. So all we're asking is, is that while the town rallied and they erected that monument, it wasn't the veterans. We're just asking for those of us that went forward. We met the enemy. They weren't going to stop. We know that. We went over and we stopped them, and they haven't been back since. If we don't do something like this, getting folks to put the uniform on moving forward is going to be difficult. Why, and I mean, in Quo Washington, it's... How you treat, how you treat your veterans basically is whether or not we'll dictate whether or not people are going to step forward and stand in defense. Massachusetts wrote the book on veterans' services. The Plymouth Colony is where the Department of Veterans Affairs started. So all we're asking is, is that, you know, we do something down here. Other communities, Middlesex County, Mass... Other communities, Middlesex County, Mass has done stuff. Boston, Downey-Cork, the Mass Ball Heroes, you know, Dan McGee and all those folks, they done stuff, and there's nothing out here.
So I was, when you spoke to me a month ago, Karen, I've been thinking a lot, you know, I'm a student of history. I really, I really think, you know, we shape our future from what we've learned in our past and many times. And so out by the flagpole, there's a stone with Frederick William Gretsch's name on it. He's one of the four Ipswich people that were killed in action in Vietnam. And our students do not have a reference of those four. Paul Doian was another one. Arthur Hans Hardy, who was a captain, I know nothing of him, I'm sorry to say. Sergeant John F. Mataruchia Jr. was another. Those are the four that died in Vietnam. I went and then looked at World War II archives, and it was really tough to pull the Ipswich people out because it was organized by county. And there were three pages of three columns, very small, single space, three full pages of people who were killed in action in World War II from this county. And I don't know if our students have enough perspective on, you know, the people that have come from this county and have defended the country, and I would think that would be a worthwhile pursuit in our classes. I just mentioned my daughter's US History class, for example. It would be great to have more of an emphasis on the people who have, you know, not only fought, but also gave their lives.
I mean, you know, the Library, Edmonds Library of Congress has done like the veteran oral history. I mean, it would have been great years ago when Edwin Zirpitsky was still alive, Yvonne Taral, who was at the Chos and Resin Mar in Korea. Julie Hazuba, that was at Pearl Harbor. I mean, all these, you know, Mike Doian was one of the folks that I didn't, you know, didn't mention, obviously, Paul's brother. Sillak and the VFW is part of the fire detail, honored my father when he passed away. But there, yeah, definitely, there's a way to do it. The truth that I got my Eagle Scout out of, they've been doing veteran oral history projects for twice a month.
No, I understand. So I just, I've just, myself, I don't know much about the Ipswich veterans, and that's on me, but it would be great to, you know, get our students more of an awareness of who has served and what they've done and what they've accomplished, because that's important.
Yeah, even, I mean, Lexington and Concord, I mean, I never, I'd never been to Lexington and Concord until people came in from out of town and said, "Hey, I'd like to go to Lexington and Concord." And I was like, "Oh, I'm going to have to walk in the back, why the hell do you know?"
You can ride your bike.
You know, I've just never been.
Right.
It happens.
No, I understand. So I think your appearance tonight is helpful. We hear you. We hope to help you and to have the, we hope that the school district will help promote the speaker series. And, you know, the bridge, those kids, I love watching the kids stream over that bridge. Every day, I saw two of them today that I knew and beeped to as they were coming, walking towards town, coming home from school.
Exactly, and that's why we picked that, that's why we picked that spot, is because there is so much foot traffic that it will be, you know, it will be noticed, it will be reflected upon. Because this war has been, it's 20 years, so there is not a student in this school that has known a world where we haven't been fighting in the Middle East. It's not even something that they can comprehend, anything, what it was like prior to the War on Terror.
One of my NCOs, his son was born when we were at Fort Bragg. I got a picture of him holding like this when we came back to Iraq. He's now a medic in Arnold Alton.
There you go.
He was born, grew up, enlisted in Arnold Alton. That's how long this war has been. It's unprecedented.
So I guess today, tonight is, you know, great awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I think let's work together.
I have just a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can think of a couple groups of high school students and even eighth graders that we could potentially engage in this essay contest. I mean, we have a pretty robust civics class in eighth grade. I don't know if we want to expand the essay class down to that grade. And then there's another group of 38 students heading to Washington DC in March for a program that, you know, teaches a lot about civics, and they, you know, they go to the monuments and they're going to learn a lot, and that's another group that, you know, if you signed up for that.
That'd be a good group to go to this January.
You're interested in that.
You can play in the event in the Pentagon, et cetera, if you want.
Chubb, could I make a motion that we direct the chairman to write a letter to our state rep and our state senator to support SD 2069, or the school committee hopes that they support that? If there's any way that the closest public building to that bridge can, in the community that's going to be going over it every day, walking, can support that concept, maybe that'll push it forward.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks very much, guys. Thanks for coming in.
I just wanted, so if anybody has any questions, I'm the veteran service officer, so you can find my contact information on the town's website and the Veteran Services Department.
Great, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Dr. Blake, is, can I just say something? Is this something that could be put in the high school morning announcements, like as of this week, so that kids can see it ahead of time?
Yep.
Okay. I just know it's a place where people love to check us on things, so.
Great suggestion, Caroline. Thanks, Caroline.
Do we send, I know, at least in Winthrop, they just did a wall honoring veterans, and the students were asked to write something and then submit a picture of a veteran that they knew. My son did, my father, but, so there was a wall dedicated to veterans in Winthrop for a while. It might be nice to, when we do projects like these, send them so that veterans in the area do know they're being honored and recognized by students and communities in this way.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, yeah, it would be great to get some more awareness. It's Karen Tyler. Okay, our next item on the agenda is discussion and vote to support a school committee request to the select board to release Bylech Park for consideration as an option for a school building project. So before we go to discussion on that, and I'd like to tell you what, we had a call this week with George Hall, the town council. Greg was on that call, as well as Dr. Blake. He was helpful in outlining steps in a timeline, and he also used, which I sent around to all the school committee members, Gloucester as a guide for what they did for a similar site, taking a playground and using it for part of their combined elementary school building. The first thing is a, I just want to, he gave us a pretty, pretty good roadmap to go by, and these two gentlemen can correct me when I go off the track. First is a non-binding referendum vote at the ballot. That would potentially be this spring. Second, the select board would have to declare it's no longer needed for playground purposes. Third, we'd go to town meeting, and the Bylech Park would be transferred by a two-thirds vote of town meeting. And then we need to go forth, the fourth step, we need, we have, we need to go through the Article 97 process. Takes about a year to go through. That was Gloucester's experience, at least, in the most recent regional experience. And that's, and that's where we are with that. The process between the town and the state requirements is about two years. So far, at least this is my opinion, I've seen almost no positive support from our elementary communities to pursue Bylech Park. I was hopeful that it's a site of, that it could be a site of consideration and compromise. We've also this week, the next day on the first, Greg, Brian, and I had a call with Bill Logue. He's our facilitator with Logue Group, who worked with Amherst to help with their situation. And we are awaiting a proposal from his group to help us start with listening sessions for a potential new elementary school project. The early listening sessions would be about issues in community values and reviewing timelines for a project, a new elementary project from today till turning the key. He would, at some of these sessions, there would be a, the superintendent or a school committee member can give a 10 to 20-minute overview. They'll break out into small groups of 10 to 15 people and have three or four framing questions. And he's broadly speaking about how these listening sessions would occur, and he's giving us a proposal on that. He would not be the only facilitator at these listening sessions. There will be one at every table of 10 to 15 in the breakout sessions. So I haven't seen a lot of, I've seen a few in our last process of 40 people at a meeting, and I'm hopeful that we get those. And those sessions would also be not only at our schools, but they could also be at Town Hall and other places where people, they could be at the Masonic Hall, for example, and that's, you name it. Believe it or not, since I've always been a strong advocate for this park, with the timeline of two years to get Bylech approved, I don't think it's wise that we consider it right now. I think it's wise that we don't pursue it at this time. I would only think it prudent to reengage the discussion of Bylech if there was an overwhelming demand of the community to consider it. Now, it would only bog down our building proposal by years to get it cleared and the hurdles, and it will also affect other initiatives in the district. But I also do not think it appropriate to bind future school committees or other boards to declare never Bylech. At this time, after discussion, I'd like to entertain, and I'd want everybody's, let's talk about a motion in a minute. So those are my thoughts, and I'd like to hear some of the other committees.
Yeah, I would agree to the extent that the timing, I think, is a real challenge for me, especially with, you know, two items further down on our agenda. We'll be discussing the potential for an override coming up. I don't think we want to combine these two contentious issues and have to deal with them at the same time. I think the listening sessions that Chubb talked about will go a long way toward helping bring some compromise and some consensus on a site, and I really don't think at this time it makes sense to go to the select board and ask them to release Bylech. I just think it's, I think it's bogging down the process too much. The timing is not right. We're stretching things out too far into the future, and we're backing everything up, again, potentially putting an override at risk and a school building project at risk down the road. So I would, I would recommend that we just delay it, or not delay it, but we avoid going to the select board and asking for release at the same time.
That's what I'm stressing that as well, that we not go and request a release of Bylech Park.
Which is essentially taking it off the table. I mean, I'll chime in. I agree, we haven't, I haven't felt much support for it in the community. You know, we've gotten some emails that have said, you know, keep your options open, look at all sites, but I haven't seen, you know, more than an email or two really coalescing around that site. And, you know, obviously, we've had a lot of opposition to it in emails and discussions in the community. So I'm, you know, I agree, it's really challenging with timing and with other initiatives that we have, and I think on paper, in concept, I liked the idea of going to the select board first and trying to get some solidity around it before going to the community, but, you know, it's going to be such a long process, and it's become kind of evident that, you know, the community support has really bubbled to the surface for it. So, you know, I support that as well. And I think it's important to think about these things in, not in a bubble, these kind of issues we have. I think we need to think about what things we have on the horizon this winter and this spring, and figure out what our priorities are. And, you know, I think, I don't have an appetite for a very long, drawn-out fight for something that may or may not work out, and doesn't seem to have community support at this point.
Thank you. Dr. O'Flan?
So I've long been very clear that the most important thing this committee does is to fund the ongoing operating budget. And our long-term success as a district relies much more on our operating budget than it does on any capital spending or any capital building. I'm a longtime advocate of a single school, and Bylech's the best site for a single school, if you can build it in a perfect world. We're going to struggle to get the select board to allow us to use the fire station location to expand parking if we want to use Winthrop for a single school. That means we're in the same place we were a few years ago, so we're going to have people who aren't going to support a single school out of the way out. And so I'm concerned that we're being forced on the same path with the same decision tree we were on last time, which turned out to be inadequate, and I'm concerned we won't get support. But my highest priority is getting an operating override passed. The words that I heard from other board members, not to hear, but on the other boards, was that you threaten your operating override by going forward with Bylech. And if you can't have both, we have to choose the operating override. That's how we fund our educators, that's how we fund our mission, and if we never build an elementary school, as long as we fund our educators and our schools, we'll be okay. So if we have to sacrifice an elementary school for that, fine, but I still think it's the best site.
I do, too. Anyone else? Jeff?
So, one question is, you know, the school committee taking an action on a vote after the public hearing, I wonder potentially if we have some uncomfortable feedback if we have this discussion sooner, and certainly the committee and members who learn, you know, from the public feedback that we receive, certainly all we see, that I've listened to it, I've read the feedback, and, you know, I hear very strongly that there's not a consensus on that site. You know, I spoke at the select board public hearing about that I believe it's important that the community knows what sites are available. I think we can take this step and say that we have sites that are available, they just at this point don't include Bylech as one of those. I also think it's important that school, or that the community know about size options, about configuration options, about number of building options. about configuration options, about number of building options. There has been, you know, some feedback that this committee already has its mind made up on a site and a configuration. I don't believe that, I don't think there's community consensus at this point on any of those issues. I don't think there's full consensus within this board as to those issues. So I think it's time to embark on those listening sessions, know and inform people about what our available options are, what configurations can be accomplished on those, and what the ultimate cost may look like. And then we will have a path that we can look to something that does have consensus. So I would support not proceeding with a vote with the select board now and seeing what those listening sessions do yield over the next several months, and then going back to the community with a plan that would have broad agreement among some of the parties that we've heard from before. And that's the path that we're ready to go down.
Thank you. So I do want to remind the committee that this was a narrow question to get, to ask to have BILEC included in these, in the site selection process. So there is education plans, configuration to discuss, size of school to discuss, you know, there are all those things before us. And we hope to kick them off, we were talking about a mid-January kickoff for the first listening sessions. And I really hope our first listening sessions will involve people from both our elementary communities in the same room. I hope these sessions will involve, and I want to be emphatic about this, the people who thought a combined school was the best solution the last time, and the folks that thought two schools were, were a, a, the best solution for our town. Because we need to have those two groups be able to, to, to sit and talk about solutions. And that's the first place we need to start. Emily?
I guess I have a procedural question, which was, we had this conversation before we weren't asked to vote, and we all appeared at the select board to request the select board release. Like, this has happened without a vote following discussion. So why are we voting now, is one of my questions. The other, I guess, is, I don't want to say frustration, but in terms of, we're talking about timing, the work that was done before tonight's meeting could have been done before the last meeting we had, before the select board, to find out this timing information, which would have better informed the decision to move forward to the select board, to talk to the community. And I feel like if what we're trying to do is build consensus trust is an incredibly important part of that. And the community needs to feel that we are doing our due diligence in each decision that's being made. So I think if there are lessons to be learned from already going down this road, it's maybe that we slow down and are more diligent as we proceed in terms of doing the foundational work before going to other boards or, and I think the listening sessions are, I said it last time, I'll say it again, I think that's key to any sort of strategy going forward. So I guess those are just questions I had.
But I think that was a statement you just had. First question, though, is what are we voting on tonight? We will, I'll entertain a motion, but I want to hear from you if you have something to say, Pa, before. We're going to, I'd like to entertain a motion to cancel our appearance before the select board and cancel the public hearing of December 6th. To consider BILEC, I'll have to, to request the select board to release for consideration BILEC Park as an option for a school building project.
No, I understand that.
That's, that's the vote we're requesting tonight.
But why now vote? And last time there was no vote. What's the different procedural?
I can't, I can't tell you. I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Since you can, we can talk to school council if you'd like. Pa, anything you'd like to say?
Well, a lot has already been said, I'll be brief. I'm hopeful that we will get some, some helpful feedback in the listening sessions. It's discouraging to be going into, I'm going to cry, I'm sorry.
I got you this week.
PTSD from the last, PTSD from the last project. It's discouraging knowing, and people can believe what they want, but knowing what I know about you guys, that people believe what they believe, that we are not coming from a place of honesty or best intention, or whatever you want to say, I find it personally hurtful as, as we are all doing our best to help the children of Ipswich and the town. And, yeah, I'm, it hurts. Anyway, so moving on, I'm just really hopeful that we get some good feedback, that we have a lot of people participate, because I, I think it's important that we are able, as everyone has said, to build some consensus going forward. And I hope that we just have really productive, you know, listening sessions and are able to, to get really good feedback and move forward.
Yeah, Emily, to your point, I really, I, I know what you're getting at, I agree with you. In hindsight, I think we should have voted on that approach, what we did. And at least speaking for myself, I, I know you and I differ on this, I felt like going to the select board first and getting their blessing to include it should have happened before the listening sessions. At the time, I fear was the listening sessions would get bogged down with BILEC's not the spot. So we differ on that. But in hindsight, you know, I think we should have, we should have voted as a board or had more discussion as a board about what the best approach was going forward. And, you know, it's not, certainly it's not on Chubb, it's on me, it's on everyone here for not saying, look, guys, we need to step back, we need a motion to support this approach to the select board, or how are we going to do this? So we didn't do it. But at least now we are. I mean, I think that now we can use this as a lesson learned and move forward from here with these listening sessions and see where it goes.
I know that if experience speaks to anything, once this is off the table and we ask for, you know, the fire station to see if we can evaluate parking at the Winthrop site, people will come out and say, oh, the fire station's a precious resource and it's a historic landmark and you can't touch that. Then people will say the traffic downtown is horrible and it's too small a site, it's going to be too expensive to build there. And then we're not going to get Town Hall because it's a dump, or, you know, the, the site was a dump and people won't want us to do there and there'll be traffic issues like last time. There's just, and we can't get Mile Lane because we'll have local opposition to Mile Lane. So there's, there's really not going to be any discussion or decision-making tree. We're going to get chased from place to place because that's what happens in public sessions. And it's disappointing that there's a lot of selfishness in this community. And people want to defend their local interests. And, you know, the big picture is, you know, we've got lots of opportunities to build around town, but everyone will fight to keep it away from their, their house and they want to be able to walk to it. And that's been a challenge for us on, on the last time and this time. And I assume that's going to happen again. I can't see why it won't.
Well, I hope that, I hope that we frame everything with the best interests of our students at heart, because I haven't heard a lot of that in the last, in the last four weeks. So the, I know, I know, I know. The Mile Lane site, I thought was bought for an elementary school construction.
Yep.
And it was, I believe, and we'll have to double check with council and town council that it's controlled by the school department.
Yep. We won't, we won't build it.
Why's that?
It was local opposition.
Okay, we'll see.
This, this is why I wanted to put some parameters around the listening sessions. Because, I don't know, we, I need to decide what they are.
So.
We, we have, we can say we're not opening the discussion to Mile Lane, can't we?
But why wouldn't we? So, so I get you. But we're soliciting a proposal for these listening sessions. We'll bring the proposal to the school committee and then, and then we'll have a debate on what the proper parameters are. Does that sound fair? And that proposal is weeks away, not months.
So I'll second Chubb's motion. Or, do I have to move it?
I think you have to move it.
Okay, so move.
Do you have a motion there, Laura?
I have the motion to cancel the hearing before the select board, cancel the public hearing of December 6th to the select board to release for consideration BILEC Park as a school building project as an option for a school building.
Just an amendment to that. It's the select board's public hearing, so I don't know that we have the authority to do the second part. We can, we can withdraw the request, but we can't cancel the public hearing.
We can request they cancel the public hearing, right?
Yes.
It's their meeting, though, it's already posted, so.
I'll call them first thing in the morning.
How about, how about, you want a new motion? Are you good with that one? Are you good with that one?
What do you have?
Miscommissions.
I was just going to say, move the request that the school committee remove the, or move the support that the school committee remove the request that the select board release BILEC Park for consideration.
Is that fit, Jeff?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can we put someone on the committee to assess the fire station repurposing?
Jeff Correa's already on it.
I'm on the committee, I think it's still being put together now by, by the town manager.
Okay, keep that article. The select board will know about this five minutes from now. Just saying.
They already know.
I'm sure they already know.
All right, we haven't voted. All those in favor? opposed? Six to one. Thank you. Emily, you are up for the Traverso Weatherall Innovation Grant presentation.
So there were 13 Traverso Weatherall Innovation Grants approved this fall. The total money awarded was $56,365.82. Just as a general overview, there were some functional grants that were approved. And then interestingly, and I think I, this is from some of the comments at our mutual concerns meeting, I could see the teachers sort of really working to adapt to the challenges brought on by COVID, adapt curriculum to new challenges they're seeing in the, in the classroom, and new challenges brought on by this accelerate-not-remediate approach. So I really am continually amazed by their creativity and how they rise to everything that is thrown in front of them. And some of that's evidenced here tonight. The first grant that was approved is Stepping Into Kindergarten. This was brought by Carrie Zagarella at Winthrop. This is a program that's run for a couple of years where it's based on Mr. Rogers and how he had the routine every day of changing his shoes when he came in at the beginning of the day, and then changing his shoes when he left at the end of the day, giving sort of bookends and consistency, stability, creating routine and common experience for kids. And Mrs. Zagarella started this in her classroom a couple of years ago. Based on the increase in kindergarten size this year, they needed about 10 more pairs of shoes to continue with the program this year. So that grant was approved. And I think it's a really neat bringing together of kindergarten students. So that was nice to see. The second grant was a 3D printer grant that was approved. It was for the high school by Ethan Powers, submitted it, wrote the grant, and it's expanding the program to increase the 3D printers and get multi-color printers, which are used by robotics and drafting and design students. They got 3D printers a couple of years ago and they're, they're used so much and they're so popular, it was time to upgrade the program. So that was exciting. Girls Inc. and STEAM Projects was a grant that was written by Sarah Mitchell at Winthrop, and this was to, for a program accessible by all elementary students and middle school students. Girls Inc. in general is to promote self-esteem, healthy risk-taking, and to foster strength and navigate gender barriers for young women as they grow. It's three eight-week sessions focused on doing STEAM activities. So I think this was a really popular program before, and I think everybody's very excited about it again this year and going forward. The fourth grant was the Pampers Pole High Element. This is to replace the high element, a grant replacing the high element of the outdoor challenge course for Project Adventure, which is definitely something we don't want to leave to chance. So that was written by Kristen McGinley at the high school. The fifth was Elementary Comic Con. This, this was a super cool grant, I thought. It was written by the librarians at both Doian and Winthrop, and it was about bringing graphic novel creators to the elementary school to work with students in creating their own comic book and graphic novel style creations. So comic books are magazines or like flip books and movies and things like that, which I thought was really neat. And then they also wrote a grant for an elementary robotics program, and that was sort of to get computer programming foundation for elementary schools. And I believe that's already started a little bit, and I know that at least the elementary school students I know are big fans of it. And I think it's to give more foundation to the middle school and then high school programming. Books to Diversity was a grant written by Gabriel Archimbo for the middle and high schools, for our multi-language learners. It's to increase the variety of books they have access to at their reading level and ability. It's more reflective of them and their experiences, and they're also easily, easily accessible. They're going to use these books to create book clubs. Again, by Gabriel Archimbo at the middle and high school, Multilingual Showcase. And I know that Brian has talked about this, and it sounds amazing and has already grown out of the original grant concept, I think. And it was to showcase our ELL students, have them showcase their work at Zoomies and in a magazine. And then the grant was really to support a celebration of all of their work. And I, I think it's grown bigger than Zoomies at this point, right?
It has.
Which is awesome.
They were great, yeah.
Yeah, so just a really, really exciting experience, I think. Hopefully, everybody in Ipswich can take advantage of, of seeing their work. Then there was a grant by Mr. Dano and Ms. Morris at Winthrop on a focus garden for the fourth grade. This is an Asian-styled gravelstone and plant focus garden, an outside classroom space that the kids will create and design. They'll create their own rules for use, and they're also going to have to maintain the space. So I thought that was a neat and ambitious project for fourth graders, and I'll be really interested to see how it turns out. Joy is Contagious was a grant written by Jake Patterson and Jen McNichols at the middle school. This is to bring project adventure to the middle school level and sort of get kids out of their heads. It seems to be, again, in response to last year, COVID, the isolation, and this is really to get kids moving and working together and integrated again. So that seems like a pretty cool grant. I can't imagine middle school students not loving it. Again, recognizing how our teachers see gap Again, recognizing how our teachers see gaps in curriculum and work to fill them in creative and innovative ways. It's no surprise Ms. Lopez Ryan at Doian wrote a grant for building fact fluency. She's identified some gaps in our new math program and wants to work to create opportunities for play and toolkits for teachers to sort of plug in these gaps, creating more opportunities for fact fluency. Jasmine Carbonay at Winthrop, I might be saying that last name incorrectly, wrote a grant for a Tiger Year Festival, which sounds really cool. As you guys know, Winthrop teaches Mandarin and introduces Mandarin to the students. So this is to bring in the New England Chinese Cultural Studios to celebrate dance, do art rubbings and paper cuttings to celebrate the Chinese New Year. And then, the last grant that was approved is for laser cutting. Bill Glont at the high school needed to upgrade the laser cutting machines. And one of the things that I thought was interesting was some of the students have used the laser cutting machines to do laser cutting on Mr. Mitchell's, like, a conference table that he uses. So I thought that would be kind of neat to see at some point. So, again, endlessly impressed with our teachers and how they see our students and what they can create in order to add depth to our district.
Thank you.
I always love to hear these. They're amazing, and they're, they're so much more enjoyable than, I think, pain grants, which, no offense, are superintendent-directed, are big and district-oriented. But these are a thousand educators and people in the district all popping with new ideas and new thoughts. I mean, the year of the tiger celebration, that's awesome.
It's awesome.
But literally.
Is this year the year of the tiger, by the way?
February 1st starts the year of the tiger.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
And, you know, I would say every year is the year of the tiger. Reality is, all these great new ideas inspire kids, inspire educators, and are the greatest use of our, you know, FEFFI funds. Even though we rely on them for professional education, for development of our curriculum, for technology, really, these little, little popping things are just awesome. So thanks so much for working with those guys. Thanks to all the educators who put forth such good, good plans. Do we spend enough money, do you think, or are we gonna?
No, let's spend more, I mean, we have more.
How much more is left?
That I don't know. But no, I think it's, it's amazing for our students to get these amazing opportunities and don't realize the passion that goes into them sometimes. But what I think is really neat is seeing kind of the spark of joy going back into our educators who are exhausted and, you know, are just pushing through what's going on with their students between last year and then just the day-to-days of teaching, and then seeing their passion come through in this way. It's just, it's inspiring, not just as a school committee member, but as a parent to know.
So I've seen that shoe grant for five, five ti- it's been a repeating grant. There must be two hundred pairs of shoes now.
No, it was, it was funded by Fry's for a couple of years. So I think this is only the second year of request. And it's not that we're having kids wear each other's shoes year after year.
Sure. Sure, no, I know. They get to keep them.
Yeah.
They get it.
No, it's, it's, it's really neat. I don't know, it's just, we're lucky.
It's great.
We're lucky to have this opportunity, we're lucky we have this resource.
And I think it is a wonderful community resource that we have available to us that critically important to remember that none of these initiatives could be supported in the current operating budget. These are all things that are above and beyond what's possible, given our, our operating budget. To your point earlier, you mean about the override.
So not to sound like a broken record, but I'm always the guy who says this trust is growing a lot faster than we're spending it. There's always money left over. So I'm wondering if the administrators feel like it would be beneficial for one of us to go do a quick pitch on FEFFIs funds once or twice a year just to make sure the teachers are fully aware that this resource is available. And I'm sure they know, but just to keep it front of mind.
Yep, so there, there actually is an opportunity, an informational session in the spring that's done before the, before the round of pain grants.
Okay.
So, so there is informational sessions that are held. Anybody that's interested can come in and hear the, hear the pitch.
Our distribution will exceed nine hundred thousand dollars this year, and it's, it continues to grow, so.
And are the Traverso Weatherall grants distributed among the different schools relatively equally? Are they, are they differently distributed from different schools? Did you look at that?
I think it varies year to year.
Year to year, we've had some real disparities between schools. I'm hoping it's even better.
I didn't see crazy disparities. You know, each year, one school is a little heavier than the others, but I don't.
Remember, one year we didn't have one at Winthrop.
Yeah, one of our worries would be that, is, for example, new elementary teachers didn't have a chance to inform their educators or to use that resource. But I'm hopeful that, you know, we're making sure everyone's in on it and going for it.
Well, that's why it's important that we split these into two, spring and fall.
Yep.
The, the Traverso Weatherall grants, so that's, that's new. It's also been increased from five thousand and seventy-five hundred, so that's, that's good as well, keeping up with things, so. You know, and for that new element, for exactly what you just said, that new elementary teacher, for example.
Yep.
We're gonna highlight some of these in our next school committee newsletter in January, so if you have, you know, if you want to give us three or four that we should highlight.
Oh, I'll write it up, I'll write it up. Yeah, just remind me, like, multiple times.
Third week of January, so you guys.
Yeah, you're gonna have to remind me.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. So, unlike the bilek park, we're starting tonight with discussion and a vote to support an operational override. So I'd like to turn that meeting, the topic over to Greg Stevens. He's our budget subcommittee chair, former FEFFI and spreadsheet whiz, sorry.
I wouldn't say that.
Oh, come on, come on, it's like a novel for you.
So we've all talked a lot about the override. We've talked a lot about it in our budget subcommittee meeting. But just a quick kind of refresher of what, kind of what leads us to this discussion today. We're in year eight of our stabilization fund withdrawal. We have funds in there now to get us through FY twenty-three. However, going into FY twenty-four, we kind of fall off the cliff. FY twenty-three leaves us with just about a one-point-nine million dollar operating shortfall. Fortunately, we have stabilization funds to draw from. We have about two points, about two-point-six million in our stabilization fund now that can offset that shortfall of one-point-nine million. The next year leaves us with a pretty significant shortfall. So our feeling was, in the budget subcommittee, that it was prudent to approach the taxpayers in May of twenty-two for an override with a number that should get us through at least the next five years. We're looking at a number in the range of about two million dollars. The way we basically came up with that money is, again, just to, to allow us to stretch that stabilization fund for a minimum of five years. The cost of waiting is pretty dramatic. If we were to wait till FY twenty-four for the override, that two million dollars would get us about two years. We would need two and a half million dollars to stretch us to five years. We waited an additional year till FY twenty-five, we would need an override of three-point-seven million to get us those five years. So the question is obviously, why are we asking for an override now with money in the bank? Well, the answer is, number one, we have to, we can ask for a lesser number. And number two, we'd rather not run into a situation as we did back in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, when we had a failed override, significant cuts across the district, and then had to pass an override to add a lot of those programs back in, those cuts back in. We feel it's prudent to be asking for the money now to be able to bolster our stabilization fund, to then be able to smooth out things over the next five years, build upon the base budget that we asked our administrators to present to us three years ago, which has been a very successful, the last three budget seasons have been very successful in terms of building off of that base and that right-sized budget. So that's really it. I mean, that's just, again, it's going a little earlier than we need to, so we can ask for a lower number, and we can have, you know, potentially no interruptions to the programs that we're offering our kids.
Dr. O'Flane?
I'd like to acknowledge several of the emeritus school community members in the crowd who are part of the group that got this override put together and supported. To look at this override is to look at the history of what we've done over many years. We tried to pass overrides from time to time, and they were a struggle. We ended up making significant cuts before we did the overrides, and it caused poorly-funded budgets with programs that came and went out of the budget. The best thing we can do for the education of the kids is to allow a good quality budget to be stable year to year, not growing dramatically, not shrinking dramatically, but stable. And stability is why we set this up. The fatal flaw of the longer-term override is that at the end of the cumulative stabilization funds, if you run too far with it, you end up falling to where you have a very, very large deficit compared to the existing operating funds from the town. And you're relying on the stabilization funds to fund that year or two at the end of the override, and you're gonna end up in a position, if you go too far, that you fall off a cliff and you're gonna have a couple-million-dollar hole in your budget. So the decision-making with the budget group and the group that's seeking an override is to seek the override while we're still in the stability phase, before we fall off that cliff. And so we can make the budget smoother over time and protect ourselves from that downside of the far end. So I, I think it's particularly important to look at this year, both because it's our slot in, in the overall timing of the community, but also because if we wait another year, it gets much more expensive and much scarier and much harder for us to predict our outcomes over the long haul. So I think it's a better thing to go ahead. Okay, and none of you guys remember before, you probably don't have a great memory of before the, this override, but we had some hard years, and we made significant cuts, and it was very painful. And that's the hardest thing you'll do as a school community member, is cut teachers with parents sitting in the crowd. As hard as it is with bilek, it's much harder to cut, cut teachers from a kid's second-grade class. So this is, this is critically important for our success as a district.
Kate?
So, to me, two-point-five next year versus two million this year doesn't seem like a huge difference personally. And I have some concerns, and I'm, I'm really curious to see how everyone on the committee feels, because we've talked about it at the subcommittee level, and I know we've talked about it sort of peripherally at the whole committee level, but I want to make sure we're really on board with this. Similar to the bilek issue, I like the concept on paper of, of getting ahead of it and sort of asking for things before we get to the point that we need to make a lot of cuts and before we get to sort of the edge of that fiscal cliff. But in reality, we're not on paper. We're a real town with real people that have a lot of other issues going on. And similar to the bilek issue, I don't think we can think about this in a vacuum. I think it's gonna be really challenging to pass an override if we have the school issue, you know, not farther along. And I understand bilek, you know, being off the table, but there's still a lot of questions out there about configuration, size, location. And, you know, as someone who spent a lot of time working on an override to get it passed, I really feel like we need broad community support, and I am concerned that we're not gonna get that this year. So, you know, strategically, I think we need to think about what's really important for us and, and having these two really big issues in front of, you know, whether, even if the school issue's not in front of voters, it's out there, and, and we're, we're trying to figure it all out at the same time. And I think that's a really big challenge. I held the informational override meeting on Tuesday, and there was very low turnout, to be honest. I don't feel like there's a lot of energy out there and urgency for this, and I, I acknowledge that part of our job is to, to educate people and build that sense of, of need, you know, and to, to create that energy and tell our story. But I do have concerns, given the current financial situation that we're in, that, you know, if we don't get support from the other boards, it's gonna be a real, real challenge and could sort of not go well in the end. So that's my, I haven't fully decided that those are kind of the things I'm wrestling with, and I'm curious how other people feel about it. I think Greg has, you know, if, if we want to be walked through this spreadsheet, it's sort of different scenarios.
I mean, you know, I see.
We could do that.
Yeah, I see, I definitely see what you're saying, I can see where you're coming from. My fear is that pushing it off backs us up into a school decision anyway. You know, or if, if we're sort of following down the path of configuration site and ultimately come to the town for a vote for, or we have to submit an SOI, and then we're coming to town for a vote for money related to a new school building, at the same time we're asking for an override, sort of pushing down that.
We'd maybe be asking for, what if they'd be in subsequent years if we did override in twenty-three? Vicability was.
Twenty-four.
Was in twenty-four.
I guess my, what I'm concerned about is if we don't pass it in twenty, if we don't pass it in twenty-three. If we go twenty, if we skip twenty-two for the sake of trying to sort these other things out, we go in twenty, fiscal twenty-four.
If we go twenty-three and fails.
Can I, can I interject for just a second? Fiscal twenty-three is actually the spring of twenty-two.
I know, we kind of switch them forth.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah.
So fiscal year twenty-three in the strategic plan is actually a May twenty-two town, town meeting. I just want to be clear.
Yeah. So I'm talking about, instead of May twenty-two for fiscal twenty-three.
Go to May of twenty-three.
Right, for fiscal twenty-four. And I understand if that fails, that's a problem.
So my question is, my understanding is if we go to May of twenty, if we go for the override May of twenty-three, it fails, we are then off the cliff, right? We are cutting, we are cutting programs, cutting teachers, languages are gonna go. Yes. That's my fear, because I went through that in two thousand fifteen, and I had kids in the schools then, and it was not pretty. And so that's my fear is, if it, God forbid, doesn't go in May twenty-twenty-two, at least maybe hopefully it will be a wake-up call, which is what it was last time. I don't know.
So, so.
I was gonna say, you know, just to put the numbers on it, FY twenty-four with no override, we would have, we would have about a two-and-a-half million dollar operating shortfall.
We'd have a two-and-a-half million dollar operating shortfall, and we'd have negative a million dollars in cumulative stabilization.
Right.
Now, arguably, we've got funds in other locations we can access. We've got a little choice, we've got choice money, we've got other things. So could we handle, if we skipped this year and went to the following year, went for two-point-five and didn't get it? Could we handle it? We could probably survive the year with moderate cuts. But then the following year, we'd have a three-and-a-half million dollar hole in our budget if we didn't pass anything. You can't fund a three-and-a-half million dollar budget. That's when you're on, you know, the news, and they're talking about our fiscal irresponsibility. And that's the challenge of this cumulative nature of these overrides. We're funding our children's education from a stabilization fund for eight-hundred thousand dollars this year. Next year, it's gonna be more. So, so you gotta, you gotta be relative, cognizant of, of the downside.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's already been said, too, but I mean, from what I remember last time, so we had to make these pretty draconian cuts. And it's not like when the override passes, bang, those programs are back in. It took years to get those teachers back in, to get the languages back in. I mean, it took, it doesn't happen immediately. Yeah, it's not like it just, boom, the override passes and we're back in business. It's like getting those positions back one at a time, a painful process. Sorry.
No, no, it's very, very important.
Have we ever gone for overrides in the fall?
Uh, of course.
What's the difference? Six months? So, so may I say, may I say a few things, and I'll, you'd like to say something, too, Emily? We are fiduciaries, that's one of our, you know, we set budgets. That's one of our primary roles and responsibilities on the school committee. I think the, the override request of two million. I think the override request of 2 million and then 2.5 and 3.75 lays out that we need to also be fiscally prudent and conservative with our funds. We've proven that through the last eight years of managing the override. Granted, COVID has helped. I get it. I get it. But, but, but in a weird way, it's so strange that COVID's the thing that helped us by saving money in a couple of years and getting some funding. But, but asking for 2 million now, we will not be asking the spring town meeting for any school-related building project, I don't believe. I do not think we will be ready to submit an SOI in April of this year with, we may be able to go for an approved site, but that might, you know, if the listening sessions go really well, you just mentioned fall town meeting, that might be the place where we start introducing town meeting articles for a school building project, the best place, because then it gets us ready for the following April. So this does not, by going this year with a strong case, it gives us the ability to ask for that without, without a school building project. Kate? And I'm speaking to you because I'm just, just talking to your timeline that you spoke up.
And my experience is that the fall town meetings, we don't typically ask for.
It's been opened up that we can use any town meeting for anything, but historically, fall town meeting is for zoning issues. Spring town meeting is for funding issues.
Correct.
So I have another concern of mine, just to give this a negative person tonight. It is, okay, it is support from the other boards. And I was hoping we could talk about it at the tri board meeting in a couple of weeks. So I would suggest we not vote tonight on support of an override, but perhaps we wait and get a better sense of support of other boards because it's going to be even harder to support if we don't have support of the FinCon and maybe we get resounding support of the FinCon.
They'll want to see more. I mean, this is our decision and then we have to prove it to the FinCon.
Right.
So waiting to vote, for me, that, that, that doesn't make sense and puts us in the same position that we were just in the last vote.
So if we vote tonight?
So I will, we have a chair call tomorrow morning at 9:30. I will ask that we have an override discussion at the tri board on the agenda.
So if we vote tonight to support an override and the FinCon does not support it, we're going to go ahead with it anyways?
They're not going to, I don't anticipate the FinCon giving us support for.
They're just going to ask for our calculator, ask for our rationale and talk among themselves. We're going to inform them of our goals, but they're not going to vote for or against an override until April.
Town meeting.
But they want, we want their support, you know?
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll prove we deserve their support through our budget presentations and through our presentations of our long-term information and our openness and our success with our other override.
Emily?
So I guess I have, again, one question, which would be, what does it mean to Joe Public? That what are the differences? What does it mean in terms of what are, what am I expected to pay? What is my neighbor expected to pay in terms of the different years? I think that's going to go a long way in terms of selling. Two, I think, and again, I'm thinking back to our mutual concerns meeting this week, but I think we want so desperately for normalcy to return. We are failing to realize where we are as a community and where we are as a district and where our students are. And I think that they have lost so much already in terms of time on learning, in terms of socialization, in terms of programming in the past year and a half to two years because of COVID, not going for this override and potentially jeopardizing the consistency that we're trying to bring back to their lives in school, which is so key to their development socially, academically, emotionally. I think that is a piece that needs to be thought about and talked about. To do anything that would potentially start removing teachers and programs from their lives, from kids who just went through such an extended period of time with loss, isn't what's best for our students. So if supporting the override now means fighting like hell to keep consistency in their lives after everything they've been through, if it means fighting like hell to keep consistency in teachers' lives after everything that they've been through, I think that that's a really important message for us as a school committee to think about. It doesn't mean agree, it doesn't mean disagree, but again, we are not, we're not back to normal. We're still dealing with fallout. And so I would definitely support, and I was very much on the fence for reasons that you're talking about. I think there are things we need to think through, but I think also failing to see where our kids are and how this could potentially impact them would be missing sort of the point of why we're here, in my opinion.
But I get the sense that the money from the override isn't necessarily going to the budget immediately.
It's ensuring the future.
No, it is. We're, we're deficit now. We're taking money from the stabilization to fund ourselves right now.
We're funding the stabilization fund basically to ensure the future programs for our students.
So we are in deficit.
And Hughes, to back quote Hughes loosely, his comment about one-time money can sometimes be a curse. You get it once and then it goes away. A lot of the ZESSER money has gone into the budget to fund things that we won't be able to fund when that money's expended. So that's to Emily's point, this override needs to be there to kind of backfill what we're, what we're using. So I'll, I'll make a motion to support requesting an override on, at the May 22 town meeting.
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
Carl, I have a 34 Brown for last, I guess, just a couple quick points.
You guys speak up, Carl.
I speak up?
I can't hear you.
For you guys.
For me.
For Chuck. So what is that, just to take back on previous overrides, going back to the conversation about obtaining the support of the boards? As I recall, if asked the board early on, or at least the show or consensus of support, they always have to put the formality of a vote on the warrant. You can't wait for time.
Correct.
So it always was the custom, should be the custom, to ask for a formal vote or something close to that early in the process if you can, at some pay point, you know where the board's standing. You're not surprised. So that's one point. The other thing to think about, which I know you have, but the thing that worries me a bit about the sequencing of this, I totally appreciate the risk you would take in waiting here, but I feel like the school building project is, becomes a bell drop around the neck of the town. And until it gets settled, you'll have a very hard time getting people's attention on other topics. And I think there is a possibility of settling it next year, early in the spring. Frankly, there's just a possibility of you beginning an SOI contest if you move it longer out of the base. And I'm not sure of it, but I think that if it's settled, then you know at least on the long likely outcome, or the likely outcome, you can have a lot of those choices. So I think it gives more focus to you when you're ready to move to the override. And I just fear that with the override forward now, without trying to settle the divisions that exist around the building, we'll be able to settle. So I would think about the sequencing of those two things. I guess I'm, it's a little bit more in favor of kind of forward to settle those school buildings, so please make some progress on it in advance of asking for an override. I recognize the risks involved doing it, but I think there'd be risks we're taking.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, I'd like to speak to the timeline on the school building project. I think we have, we have, we have talked about going to the MSBA and I think it's a good, a good way to go with community support and a site before we file an SOI. I do not think that we can do that before April because we will not have another town meeting to discuss site before the SOI. There's due. So.
And we feel we need a town meeting vote on site.
Yes, I do. We can take a vote on that and discuss that in the listening sessions. I think that will be one of the framing quest, three to four framing questions. Should we go to the MSBA with a site that the town has approved for an elementary school construction, once we decide, other factors like configuration and size? And I could say sites too.
Based, based on the conversation that we had months ago now with MSBA, they were, they were pretty adamant that in, in looking to get back into the process, and I want to emphasize getting back into the process, because it's not a guarantee that we submit an SOI and we're in. It depends on how many and what types of buildings people are applying for in that particular year. But when we met with the members of MSBA, they were very clear that in looking to get back in, we should have those, those pieces in place already. Since we had a failed project, everybody at MSBA knows what happened in Ipswich. They, you know, the people that were on the call with us, they, they're all very knowledgeable about what happened here. And so they're going to be looking for the site and the configuration and, and all of those things to be in place and, and have wide community support before they're even going to say, yeah, come on back in. Because it's, it's a waste of their time to let, to have us back in when we're not prepared.
We've also, we've also said we're cognizant and respectful of the strategic plan. The strategic plan has us building feasibility fiscal year '24, which is next spring request. And not, it's spring, it's spring of '23. And then a building construction fiscal year '26. So I do not think we're going to be available, ready for an April submission of an SOI this year. Josh?
I'll second Greg's motion to put the operational override on the May 22 town meeting.
Thank you. Three minutes. Take all the time you want.
No, I do think, I do think though, for the listening public, the reason Carl has been instrumental, Carl has recently retired from the school committee, hence his comments earlier this evening regarding the override. And Mr. Wrestler, you were involved in the previous override as well, so I just wanted to.
And a former school committee.
But my, my point is I want to be clear why we're allowing them to comment versus.
Okay, well, we've always been more liberal than we should, than, we've always been very liberal with who can speak and what.
I appreciate the opportunity. Obviously, you know, I'm highly invested in seeing another override pass because anyone understands how a school is funded, how a school is, is funded, understands that operational override are part of that. And I think the timing, you know, whether it's this year or next year, I appreciate the conversations and I think, you know, the timing that needs to be really precise to get it right. And I can see the arguments for both, so I appreciate the debate about it. I just, speaking again to the sequencing, it's concerning, you know, I think about the $2 million, $2.5 million ask from an operational override and I think about the cost of waiting on the building. And it's true, those two projects are still, as much as we would like to see and, and put forward to the voters, you know, separate these issues, it's going to be very hard to do that in a campaign. You know, my understanding, considering the meetings and listening and talking, is that every year we wait, it's about a 3% increase on the building cost. So if the building was 69 million back in 2018, we're already, you know, we're already about $8 million in the hole to build something appropriate to that. And so I look at it as like you're asking the voters for 2 to 2.5 million dollars potentially in May and you're delaying the work that I think could be done on an SOI that would save that amount of money. You know, if you were to put in the SOI and move the, move the timeline forward a year, that's, you know, it's, it's not an apples and oranges type thing, but, but to the voters, it will be. And, you know, you can talk about putting money into your budget and a one-time increase in a building cost, but that's going to be a very hard explanation for people. So every year we wait and delay is another $2 million. So the amount of money we're going to be asking is the amount of money you could be saving the town by moving forward the timeline just one year. And I just think you should be cognizant of thinking that I love the idea of listening sessions. I love getting people together, but I think if this group could come together and build this strong consensus for the site that is going to get us a new elementary school for all children the fastest without, you know, then I think you can build a stronger argument for the operational override. I think waiting just costs us money and leaves people room to argue. And we need an operational override and everyone to go together. And the sooner we can remove that, that confusion and anger and get it put together, we're going to be able to be more successful on the operational override.
Thank you.
So a quick question for you, Emily.
Okay, go ahead.
You guys are, I know, understood, eager about the school. And I still think the operating override is a priority of the school by far. But what do you think would be a consensus choice then, time it finally comes off the table?
I mean, I don't think I'm the right person to ask it. But who, I think, the state is asking individuals what they think. It doesn't matter what I think. It's what I, it's what I think collectively and it doesn't matter what any other individual person thinks. My opinion shouldn't matter to your discussion, so I'll withhold it. Because it's all about what can, what, what's the path forward? I agree the operational override is the most important thing.
Most important thing.
I agree.
There's no clarity on school. The kids are under pressure to figure it out.
Just in my view, until you solve some of the school stuff, I just think we're going to lose the narrative on how important that is. That's it. That's just, but I don't, I don't think, my opinion is relevant to the school thing because I'm just, you know, one voter. It doesn't matter what I think. I think we need to stop thinking about what the loudest voices are saying and think about as a group, what you can get passed.
Thank you.
And I think my only concern on this whole school versus operative override piece is, I don't think there's clarity on what the choice is going to be for our new building. I don't, I think we need to spend time listening to the community and discussing it.
Right.
And I think it's going to be sessions and sessions and sessions and people are going to drive us different directions. Whereas the operational override is something that unifies the community, that brings people together, that has clarity and purpose. And that's something we need right now, rather than division. So I'm, I'm just not eager to fight those battles over the school when I think it's a lower priority for us.
And I want to reiterate again that, that, you know, we've just had a public safety building. We have water and wastewater projects. We have road paving projects undergo, underway. The, they're all part of the strategic plan. We've, we've applied to our recognition of the sequence of that plan and, and the operating override is before the, before the building.
I guess I hear what everybody's saying and I think this discussion needs to be had, but I, my concern is one, one of wants and needs, we need the operational override. We need it. It's not, we want a new school and I understand we are, we are pushing up against the needs there and the, the two buildings that we have have way outlived their useful. And the two buildings that we have away outlived their usefulness, but there's an aspect of the strategic plan, timing, sequencing, that is completely out of our control. And we need to account for that as well. So if we're putting all of our, if we were to shift the focus and put the buildings before the override, I think, I think he's right. I think we're still running up against a really tangled road that we have no guarantees on. And we're still needing that operational override. I just think that that's the more responsible choice at this point in time, which is not to say, don't keep plodding along on the buildings. I think we have to. I think we're obligated and we need to be responsible to that. But I, I do think there's a need and then there's a want, and we have to prioritize the need at this point in time. I think that's the responsible thing to do.
I think if you look at the projected operating shortfall, it increases about half a million dollars a year, even with our additional stabilization fudge factor that we put in. That means if you wait a year, you lose, you're a half million dollar behind each year, we have to subsequent to that forever. So if we get $200,000, it's like getting $2.50000 next year. And that's going to be how it is. So it's really that extra $2 million covers four years of overrides. It's just a big difference. And it's going to be a much smaller increment for the average taxpayer for all that time. So it's appealing for the taxpayer, it's appealing for us, and it just puts that problem behind us so we can fight the school battle for two or three years if we can.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of pursuing an operational override, May 22? Those opposed? Six to one. Thank you.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
I'm in no way opposed to an operational override.
No, matter of fact, you're 100% behind it because you just got outvoted.
An operational override? I'm just, I'm opposed to the timing of voting.
Thank you. Thanks, Caroline. Have a great night. Thanks for coming.
I'm starting to get a complex. You leave at my report every week. No kidding, no kidding.
You're up.
Good night. All right. Okay, so I, I thought I didn't have a lot to report this week until I started writing. I'll start off with the COVID update. For the two-week period ending yesterday, I have to report Wednesday to Wednesday, and they didn't do the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So for the two-week period ending yesterday, I reported a total of 13 cases, and those were all in students. Three of the students were related siblings. In town this week, the positivity rate is 5% with 31 active cases. We are seeing the beginnings of a spike in cases, unfortunately, in both the town and the schools. Just today, I was, I was made aware of at least six additional cases that I'll be reporting tomorrow. And they're spread out between, between the schools. So it's not, it's not one classroom, it's not, we're not identifying any clusters, as it were. They're all individual, individual cases. And the nurses in all four buildings are doing a lot of the test and stay program.
No spread in school.
Keeping, keeping an eye, right. Keeping an eye on what's happening. It's all different classrooms. It's, there's just, there's no rhyme or reason to it at this point. Prior to break, I met with John Blair from the electric light department to discuss possible locations for EV chargers here on the school property, which is increasing the number of kids and families that have electric vehicles. It's been something that we've discussed in the past. We talked about over by the tennis courts on the other side of the building. And now we're looking at potentially the first couple of spots on the other side of the building still, yet again, where the, right next door to where the new condominiums are going in, so those first couple of parking spots in that student lot. There's a pole right there, easy to drop down, so we're looking at that as a potential spot. The sustainability class, environmental class, will be coming forward with a proposal at some point. I met with them a couple of weeks before vacation. Met with Director of Facilities, Chris Race, to get an update on the school facilities. And I want to let you know that we did have two flooding issues this week that we dealt with. One was at the Doian School, we had a urinal that broke off the wall.
Hence, we need new buildings, I guess. And teachers were mopping the floor and.
Their teachers were, jumped in, and this was like right after school.
That is a flood too when that happens.
And, yeah, and so they were guiding, they were literally guiding the water out of the building with rooms to sort of form a river so we could get the water shut off.
It took a while to get the water shut off.
It did. So we got that dealt with. And then we had a pipe burst here in the high school in the IT server closet. Thankfully, thankfully, there was no damage to any of the servers or anything like that. It flooded a couple of offices and two classrooms.
It was not frozen, had the pipe burst.
It was an air bubble in it or something. They were changing something out.
Okay.
Thankfully, in both cases, we were in the building, so we were able to get to it quick. Cleaning crews were dispatched, and the long-term damage and loss was minimal. We're drying out those areas now. We've got the staff relocated, you know, technology, we actually, they work remotely today because their space is drying out. The floor was all flooded. We had to move some kids around in different classrooms as well today. I had a meeting with, well, we have the tri board chairs called before vacation, we'll have another one tomorrow. Had a meeting with Joe Gill, our EVP director, for an update and to discuss some personnel concerns, and he's got, working through those. I have to say, from what I've heard, you know, after some initial bumps in the road, he's, in terms of attendance and, you know, just working out his own systems in light of the fact that we didn't have a program last year, and Roma had run it prior to that, I'm impressed with the programming that he's doing. He's bringing in a lot of different programming this year to the EVP program. And the kids seem to be excited, and we're still full. So we had pre-negotiations meetings and negotiation session with the IEA this week. And an email exchange and a conversation with Colin Lynch of the Disability Resource Center in Salem. We're trying to set up a partnership to work with some of his clients here. Mutual Concerns Subcommittee met last week. I attended the Rotary Breakfast last Wednesday with the high school principal, AD, the football coach, and the football and cheer team captains, along with members of the Hamilton Menum Club and their administration and team members. I had the pleasure of sitting with the legendary Coach Walsh and listening to.
Great pleasure.
Yep, it was.
In his 90th year.
Yep, yep. Listening to.
Did he get a word in at all?
No, I listened. I just, I said, I listened to the words. Listened to his stories of years gone by and a lot of games.
Maybe a quick anecdote there. When we were in football, right? If you wanted to avoid doing sprints or actually doing any work at all, hey, tell us about that time when your lieutenant blew up the ship. Or tell us about that time in Korea when, you know, so he had, he had great stories.
This is all about football. He can tell you the game that happened 35 years ago, and who played, and what the final score was, and who was hosting the game. He's got an amazing memory.
He's on top.
It was a lot of fun. Chubb, Greg and I had the conference call with George Hall, Town Council. We heard about that. Monday night, I was able to help serve dinner at the Masonic Temple with Dinner Belt, the school committee and John Mitchell, the high school principal. Our administrative team meeting this week focused on staff expectations when students are out due to COVID. And we want to make sure that we're all on the same page with the expectations for our staff, because we are seeing the increase in the number of days that kids are having to be out and the number of cases. We also discussed our budget calendar for this year, learning cycles at both the elementary and secondary levels, and renewed the calendar for upcoming events. These next couple of weeks are pretty busy with all the stuff going on in the buildings. I attended the North Shore Education Consortium Board Meeting this week, and I'll have their annual report for you in January, and I'll walk folks through that. We had, I met with Tracy on a variety of topics regarding curriculum. And then we met with Bill Loach this week to begin looking at a schedule and plan for listening sessions over the winter and the spring regarding a potential building project. Last night, I attended the first class for Supporting Culturally Proficient Classrooms in Schools. It's an administrative course for school leaders. It's four weeks long, three hours a night. So it was a great start to it, so I'm looking forward to the next three weeks. And I told you about the flooding, and that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right.
It was a short two weeks.
How was the highway in New Jersey? Pretty tough, right?
The highway in New Jersey was a long trip.
So quick hospital update. We're still in the twenties. We saw the numbers at the hospital have not gone up dramatically. Again, mostly unvaccinated people in the hospital, so the twenty-some-odd the other day, all but three were unvaccinated people who are hospitalized. We have some, again, vaccinated older people, and we've not seen the on-the-ground, obviously no one has. In terms of the hospital system, we've recently canceled all new scheduling of elective surgeries for December, and we've significantly limited January and February new scheduling elective surgery. Significant impingement on those of us who do a lot of elective surgery, but the hospital system has put the kibosh on new scheduling. So a lot of us are going to see reduced availability of the hospital for our use. Think they're scaling up for concerns surrounding COVID.
Yeah, Salem is, I was just checking, we have 23 right now, three in the ICU. I don't know their status, but I'm assuming most are probably unvaccinated. I've had personally two COVID patients in the last week, young, healthy women, asymptomatic, unvaccinated.
Yeah. I know that our Danvers testing site's been overwhelmed with demand. We've booked out a week. I think most of our testing sites have been super, super busy of recent weeks. So we're seeing a lot of awareness, and I know we have more than 5,000 positives in the state today. Those numbers are up quite a lot. And with the holiday numbers, they'll be starting to ramp up over the next few days.
We should see another fix by next week because of Thanksgiving. I have a question about kids getting vaccinated. Since we have the younger kids get, able to get, are you getting numbers on that?
So we, the nurses are collecting numbers. Again, it's not, it's not mandatory, but I know that there have been clinics, and I've sent them information, done clinics both in town here, over at the church, as well as sending out information on other clinics. And I think they can get the shots at, you know, their vaccinations at their pediatrician offices as well, so. And we keep plugging it every week, and it's, you know, I'm afraid that because I plug it every week, I'm worried that people aren't paying attention to it, I'm sure, but hopefully the rates will continue to go up.
I don't think I've seen a communication requesting that if families are comfortable and willing to share that data with the school nurses. I don't know if that's happened at the elementary school level. It may be useful, and it may be useful back to the middle school, high school for our 80% measurement as we get towards January.
Yeah, I was looking for that. I don't know what, who to email, what information.
Yes, well, yes.
Do you need a card or just?
You send a picture of your card to your school nurse.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Easy. Take a picture of the card, PDF.
How do we get that outside of this room?
Through your, through the elementary school principals.
Yes, the ones that meet weekly in the nurses and Tiger Tube.
And my messaging.
Yeah, but the elementary principals are probably.
That's what they asked us to do.
That's right, we haven't seen that from, we haven't, we haven't had to think about it. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand. I get it.
I'll ask tomorrow.
And then the DESI mask mandate is due to expire mid-January, but I, I'm going to be the first one to say, I do not see that happening, an expiration happening with cases rising. I don't see it.
Your lips to his ears, but who knows?
Yeah, who knows? But I don't.
Supposed to be January, was it January?
January 15th.
Yes.
I think, I think asking for vaccination cards and vaccination information just emphasizes that it's considered the standard in our community to get vaccinated.
Right.
And it's a good reminder to parents and to people in the community that they're playing a role in limiting the spread of the virus.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Blake? Subcommittee's Working Group and Liaisons. IEF met.
We met, yeah. It was a fairly lightly attended meeting. But they're on some good stuff. There was a lot of talk about their branding. They're sort of in the final stages of creating a brochure, talking about what they do, their various initiatives and that sort of thing, so they're getting that moving along. They're in the final stages of their website build-out, so they spent a lot of time on that, so that is good. That took up the bulk of the conversation. They asked me to give a quick presentation on the pain grants that have been provided over the last several years and focused specifically on the grants that were not funded and why. They talked about that. So they're struggling to, they're not struggling, they're working to kind of align the IEF giving with FEPIs and FRIAs and various other grant sources within town. So I think what they'll ultimately come up with is try to fill the gaps for some of the grants that FEPIs can't give because they don't fit into the enrichment and enhancement mandate, and maybe we'll kind of fill that a little bit, but it's still a work in progress. They've got a lot of things going on, but they're, it's an impressive group, and I think that they've really jumped right in after the issues that the last group had, and they're, they're doing good things, so.
Can I ask, what's the balance of that canvas?
Of.
The IEF?
They've got various accounts based on the.
No, I get, but of the aggregate numbers that they manage?
We've got it here, so I mean, it's, it's what, 10 different accounts.
I'm sorry.
So I'd say probably 300, 250,000 maybe, just looking at the numbers, we're all told. But that's everything from sustainability to money set aside for the turf.
Yep.
To street society, birth to three athletics. Carolyn Davis funded.
That's all. Good, all right. Thank you. I know negotiations met, but we can't talk about that. So is there anybody else that's met since our last meeting right before Thanksgiving?
Mutual Concerns.
Yeah, Mutual Concerns met. That was a good, that was a good discussion.
I thought it was a good discussion.
Yeah, you too.
I thought it was nice to have a reminder of how, again, I think our lofty, our desire to get things back to the way they were is sort of missing what's going on in the schools, the work that's happening and needs to happen in order to get us there, and we're just not there yet. So maybe some of the goals that we set, while righteous goals to set, aren't necessarily timed appropriately given the needs of what's going on in our schools. So I thought that was a very powerful piece of the presentation.
So, yeah, I'll just list what we talked about briefly. That's okay. They were, the teachers would like to institute an old tradition of tri board members visiting schools. That's one of them.
Can you speak up, Chubb?
What?
Speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry. The first thing they spoke of was the old tradition of having the tri board members visit our schools. So that sounds, sounds like a good lofty, good thing to pursue. They spoke about wanting to, teachers want to help support the override. There are HVAC issues that I know are much better than they were years ago. There are HVAC issues that I know are much better than they were years ago, but there's still a couple, and just the ticket system that was developed. I don't know if you all remember the ticket system that we developed a couple of years ago. I think it was just before COVID, or was it, I think it was before COVID. It's working.
School do.
Yeah. The fourth, the new building, the IEA looks forward to being advocates for a new facility. Five initiatives. They still would like to have greater collaboration between the two elementary schools. Independent and social skills are lagging by a couple of years, they said. That's a pandemic result, and we're all playing catch-up to that. Teachers want to have a greater, a greater collaboration with the school committee. And seven, I guess I said collaborate, collaborative relationships don't happen with school committee teachers right now. That's my notes, I'm sorry. So I have to, I have to interpret that. But, you know, I, one of the problems that we all have as school committee members, and actually this, new business, I'm going to discuss this, so is our organizational chart. And we flow through the administration, so it's tough. As a parent, you're, 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 you know, we're more than welcome to spend as much time as you need or want or the teacher wants you to speak to, but as a school committee member, you know, our, our communication flows through the, flows through the administration. So greater collaboration could be in bringing, having more presentations here in front of the school committee by, by, by teachers. I know we've had many in years past. We've been kind of bogged down with work, and now we're about to go into budget season. So we have January to maybe have some of that happen. And it was a good meeting all along, so.
Yeah.
Good discussion. Anyone else meet? I think that was it, wasn't it?
CPAC met. CPAC met. Neither Emily or I made it to the meeting on Tuesday, but Jackie Potter and Beverly Hedges did a presentation. I would be interested in having them come and speak to us about the transition from receiving services from the elementary schools to the middle schools was their topic. I think another one has been the audit, and maybe if there's been any traction on that could be something that they could, for ADHD and autism services, but maybe we could come up with a bundle of topics and they could give a little presentation.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I think the CPAC audience tends to be pretty limited, so a school committee presentation would probably be more helpful in reaching a broader audience.
Okay, well, there you go. There's, there's someone to come in? New business. Does anyone have any new business?
I do want to bring out one observation. Our state champion volleyball team wouldn't have been state champions without a school choice kid who came in from Gloucester, from Georgetown. Our outstanding near-state champion field hockey team wouldn't have been a near-state champion without two awesome, educatious students. So I think this lifeblood that we bring into our district is the little difference between good teams and great teams.
Oh, yeah.
Variety and, and outstanding performance. And we've seen it in music, we've seen it in sports, even when my younger kids were going to state championships and, and basketball. There were choice kids who came here for the quality of the program and for their relationships with other kids in that program, and they made, made something small to something great. It was often kid motivated, so it's, it's a great thing, I think.
I completely agree, at least from the field hockey perspective. Going global for these girls, open, open their eyes to other cultures and, you know, just, we know how many, we, we know how many field hockey players there are in, in the Netherlands now. We know how, how, it's just a huge community, it's a, it's a community anchor in all these towns.
Kids find their places to excel, and if we provide those opportunities for kids, it's a great thing.
It's really great. And I'm hopeful that we are able to get, I know we lose one of our education students, who I am sure will be honored at the Fall Sports Awards, but, but before year end, so, so hopefully we'll get, get her in. I have some, we are, you know, every year we, we haven't, at our retreats, we haven't, we, we've, we've talked about our norms, but we haven't had a roles and responsibilities presentation from our legal counsel for roles and responsibilities of their school committee members. We do have some folks that haven't ever had that. Probably, probably I and the last two, no, and Hugh, excuse me.
I don't think I ever had that.
From Liz Valerio.
I think that was the first, the first, well, the first year that, that I came, we did that as the school committee superintendent, that very first retreat over the summer, and that was provided by the MASC Association of School Committees.
Yeah, yes, it was MASC, but, but this is done by our legal counsel, Liz Valerio. I'd like to schedule that for our next meeting. If we meet on the 16th, not on that date, she's not available. Probably our first meeting in January. Take an hour.
Tell me about the band concert on the 16th and our next meeting on the 16th.
Yeah, I know. To be, to be determined. To be determined.
So, so, so we're going to have Liz at some point as an hour? Is it part of the regular school committee meeting? Is it, is it non-public?
We can do it. We can do it either way. So we can do it as a workshop, or we can just do it as the first item on our agenda, and she would join us via Zoom or via whatever.
Oh, okay.
Well, that was if it was December 16th, so, so I don't know what her schedule is. It's a compliance thing. We haven't done it in years. It's time.
So when concerts happen on school committee meetings?
Yeah.
Sneaking out to us, I don't know, or...
So, yeah, so what, we seem to run, we seem to run into this every, every December, and it sneaks up on us. In the past, we have canceled the second meeting in December just because of the time of year and all the events. I think, you know, for the next, the next two weeks, I think there's an event going on of some sort every single night, Monday through Thursday. So, and, and they culminate, the 16th is the large group ensembles for the district that night. And so it's going to be a madhouse here anyway. So unless there's pressing business, I...
I'd, I'd propose we cancel...
I'll be here anyway.
I'll propose we cancel the December 16th school committee meeting because...
My second.
There's one, two, three, three band members, so we don't have to vote on it. We don't have to vote on it. There's no vote. But, but have a nice Christmas and holiday season.
This would be the last meeting before the holidays.
Don't worry, Brian, I'll see you before Christmas.
Oh, absolutely. I'll see everybody, I'm sure.
Oh, you know, I'm, I'm folding things up like I've done my job, and I haven't. I'm sorry. So what do we got? Do we have a consent agenda here tonight?
Consent agenda, and we have any other new business.
Do we have any other new business?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda, move the, what?
I did forget.
Okay, new business.
New business. We got the, the NASDAQ enrollment numbers did just come in. When I looked at them, I can, I can send them out, but when I looked at them, something didn't seem right to me in the numbers. And then I started looking, and I actually made a phone call to them and said, this doesn't, this doesn't look right. The numbers are correct with, with how and what they report, but it's not, the numbers don't add up to what we actually have in our buildings because they don't include kids, like the building of staff members, for example. So they're not including...
What?
Because they're not Ipswich kids, they're projections. So, so it's wonky. So I had a discussion with Karen Laduke at, at NASDAQ about doing a more in-depth study because I also had concerns about the number of housing starts. It's actually reported that there were 11, 11 building permits. And I'm thinking, just in the last year, there's been a lot more than 11 just on Mile Lane. I think there's 11 homes just in there, never mind what's on, what's on Linebrook Road. So they can do a more in-depth study that I would like to pursue, so, because with all that's going on, I think it's going to be mission critical to have accurate numbers.
Yep.
You know, I don't want to put out numbers that say we have 1,560 kids when, if I have 100% attendance tomorrow, we've got 657 kids or some, some number, I'm making that up off the top of my head, but, but it's significantly more than what the NASDAQ numbers are showing. So I want to, I want to pursue that if it's, if it's okay. I don't think it's, I don't need to vote, but I just want to make folks aware of that.
I think that's the type of stuff people want to know and are looking for us to bring forward. I think that's smart.
Yeah. And that's one of the, one of the things, I don't want to give out inaccurate information because the minute somebody sees that, they're, they're running with it, and it's not...
And these are current numbers and projections out 10 years?
Ten.
So what does it look like?
They're not accurate.
Understood. But what do they tell you?
They're showing...
Dead level.
They're, they're showing about stable.
Yeah, and that's what everything that we've heard up till now has said.
Right. And I guess it's, and that may end up being the case, but there's, there's this notion that we're seeing this influx. And so, you know, maybe we're seeing the influx and we're going to have a lot of kids graduating and leaving and the lower numbers are...
We've been talking about influxes on every development I've seen since I've been here for 19 years.
Yep. But we saw it this year.
There is still some pretty big classes at high school, at least.
And we saw it this year.
The kindergarteners are out of control.
We've gone from 650 to 748, so, yes, in elementary.
So I will, so I will pursue that with them tomorrow and make sure we have accurate information, so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No problem. No problem. Any, no other new business. I'll go to the consent agenda. Move the Ipswich School Committee to accept the following. The open session meeting minutes from Thursday, November 18th, 2021. A $3,000 check from Institute for Savings for the High School Robotics Team to be deposited into the high school gift account. All those in favor? Janice, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thanks very much. Thank you, Ipswich. Have a nice night.
Bye, Ipswich.